We will start this meeting off with Presentations. Education and Sharing Day USA by the Mayor.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
I have a joint resolution between the Council and the Mayor declaring Tuesday, March 27th, that's tomorrow, shall be Education and Sharing Day USA. And I'd like to ask Rabbi Mendelstein to come forward and anyone else with him. Thank you, Rabbi. This is again a joint resolution between the Mayor of the City of Southfield and the City Council resolving that whereas March 27th, 2018 will be marked as Education and Sharing Day USA by the United States Congress and the President of the United States as a national event since 1978 in recognition of the monumental achievements of Rebbe Rabbi Menachem Shneurson and whereas for the betterment of education for all Americans as a day to raise awareness and strengthen the education of our children. And whereas on the day marking the Rebbe's birth urging all U.S. citizens to learn from the lessons taught by the Rebbe and devote more energy and education to education. And whereas Education and Sharing Day USA provides an excellent opportunity for the City of Southfield to demonstrate its dedication to the well-being and education of all children and adolescents of our city. And whereas to recognize the importance of and to educate the public on the universal vision and teachings of this global spiritual leader who dedicated his life to the betterment of mankind and was a tireless advocate for American youth. And now therefore be it resolved that the Mayor and City Council of the City of Southfield call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses and schools to commit to increasing the awareness of Education and Sharing Day USA. Be it further resolved that we, the Mayor and Council of the City of Southfield, County of Oakland, State of Michigan do hereby declare March 27th, 2018, Southfield Education and Sharing Day USA in the City of Southfield, Michigan. And it's signed by myself and each of the seven members of City Council. I would note two things before I present this officially to Rabbi Mendelstein is that in our city charter or our city logo, we have education, commerce and culture. So I think it's very fitting that we're doing this. And also in case the term Rebbe is not one you're familiar with, this is sort of a grand spiritual leader beyond, he was a Rabbi, but he was more than that. And it wasn't just that he, Rabbi Menachem Shneurson tended to his congregation, he tended to all Jewish and non. So Rabbi Mendelstein, glad to present this to you.
Thank you, Mayor Seiver and the City Council. My name is Rabbi Mendelstein. I am a resident of Southfield and a development director for the Lubavitchi Shiva International School of Chabad Leadership in Oak Park. As the Jewish people prepare for the holiday of Passover commemorating the Exodus from Egypt, I would like to touch upon an interesting phenomena which we find when reading the biblical narrative of the story of Exodus. Just after leaving Egypt, Moses gathered the Israelites and spoke to them, not of the promised land or the long walk ahead, but rather he spoke of the duty of parents to educate their children and repeatedly spoke similar messages until his final days. Why the obsession with education? Because to defend a country, we need an army, a strong army, but to defend a civilization, we need good schools. The great leader and teacher, the Rebbe Rabbi Menachem Shneurson of righteous memory taught that every individual and in fact every individual action has an impact on the entire universe. The Rebbe emphasized the importance of education and good character and instilled the hope for a brighter future into the lives of countless people in America and across the globe, especially now with the most recent horrific events that shook us all to the core. When we are all looking for answers to combat the type of hateful behavior which we are seeing now, I think there is one thing that can resonate with us all, that which the Rebbe taught, that education in general should not be limited to the acquisition of knowledge and preparation for a career, rather the educational system must pay more attention, indeed the main attention, to building of character with emphasis on the moral and ethical values that are the bedrock of society from the dawn of civilization when they were known as the seven no-eyed laws. Tomorrow, Tuesday, March 27th, Americans will once again be marking Education and Sharing Day USA. This day was established by the United States Congress in 1979 and signed by the President each year on the date corresponding to the Rebbe's Hebrew birthdate in tribute to his commitment to teaching the next generation of Americans the values that make our country strong. This day provides Americans the opportunity to pause and recognize our responsibility to ensure that our young people have the foundation necessary to lead lives rich in purpose and fulfillment. Today, by the Mayor and City Council recognizing this day as Education and Sharing Day in Southfield, it is a call to all citizens of this great city to reflect on the vital role of education in preparing our youth to be the leaders of tomorrow with an emphasis on inspiring them of their moral and ethical obligation to serve a greater cause than self and by the anchor of virtues including courage and compassion. I would like to thank once again the Mayor and the City Council for their resolution to instill in the young minds and hearts of our children the empowering message that one act of goodness and kindness can tip the scale to usher in the era of world peace. May our city serve as a beacon of light for all people of all walks of life. May Southfield help achieve the goal so powerfully stated in our pledge of allegiance so that America is truly one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice to all. Thank you.
Very nice.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to come around?
Sure.
Shake our hand since he was...
Right.
Right. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to come around?
Sure.
Shake our hand since he was...
I'd like to...
John F. Frasier.
Go, Rachel.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to come around?
Sure.
Shake our hand since he was...
I'd like to...
John F. Frasier.
Go, Rachel.
Go, Rachel.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to come around?
Sure.
Shake our hand since he was...
I'd like to...
John F. Frasier.
Go, Rachel.
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 ... supported by Mr. Focassi that we approve consent agenda items A through F. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those, the ayes have it, consent agenda items A through F are approved. We will now go into public hearing for the rezoning quest of Dorchen Martin Associates.
The first item on your agenda is PZR 18-0001. This is a rezoning request of Dorchen Martin Associates for rezoning of property on, at 27,000 Telegraph Road. Tied to that as well is the second item under your public hearings, PSLU 18-0001, and then there are under site plans PSP 18-0002. Do you want me to take those individually? Do you want me to present them all at once?
Let's take them individually.
Individually. Okay, thank you. Okay, so for the first item, again, PZR 18-0001, and I will turn off the floodlights here, just to make it a little bit easier to see. So this piece of property, again, 27,000 Telegraph Road, we're just north of the I-696 Northwestern Highway Freeway, so we're between Northwestern Highway and 12 Mile Road. The property itself was an old Toys R Us store. Regional, from a future land use standpoint, the property itself, we're looking at regional mixed use from the standpoint of the master plan and future land use. Property has dual zonings on it right now. It has a portion of RS, you know, regional shopping, as well as a small sliver of B3 general business. What the petitioner is seeking this evening is to rezone that small sliver of B3, .71 acres of land, to RS regional shopping. Basically, what it's doing is it's cleaning up the property. Instead of having dual zoning on it, we are just looking at a single zoning on the property instead of the dual zoning. So that is what the petitioner is asking for this evening from the standpoint of the rezoning request.
You want to speak, Mr. Dorchen?
In Southfield, oh, there it is. The purpose of the rezoning request is clearly stated by the planners to consolidate the zoning in that area and to get rid of a small, isolated, zoned parcel. Thank you.
Okay, this is a public hear, the public hearing is open. Clearly state your name and address.
I see a sign right here that says what I'm supposed to do. Pamela Gerald, PO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 4037-0155. My telephone number is 248-346-0439. I'm totally in support of PZR 18-0001. I don't think any part of the city of Southfield should have dual zoning because you will always have a problem with the aspect of the RS zoning versus the small part, .71 acres that would be considered B3. I think that area needs a lot of TLC. I can remember back in the day when Chatham's Grocery Store was there and Toys R Us was really booming. When it was announced that Toys R Us was going out of business, my husband and I said that it would be a great thing if Mr. Glassman, meaning the son, Mr. Glassman, and also the father, if they would consider getting that property. And then the next time we looked and saw it, they had cars on the lot and we thought, maybe they're going to do it. So it was quite refreshing to have the younger Mr. Glassman to come to the city of Southfield and state his interested concerns about the zoning and also redeveloping that area. Now, I'd like to ask counsel a question, and you probably won't answer it now, but for your consideration. That is the same area or strip on Northwestern Highway where the former New Soul Gardens is rebuilding their facility. Did we declare that a district where a new development would be considered for brown feel or for tax abatement? And if so, are you going to offer that to a business owner that's been in the city at least the 35 years that I have with the city of Southfield? And I'm sure it's been longer than that. So that's pretty much all I have to say, and if anyone wants to be so inclined to address the issue of that being a tax abatement or brown feel redevelopment area, I would greatly appreciate it, and I'll yield 35 seconds. Thank you.
Public hearing is still open. Anyone else wishing to address this particular issue? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Counsel, you have any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move PZR 18-0001, the rezoning request with Dorchen Martin Associates.
Support.
Been moved by Mr. Focassi, supported by Mr. Cruz, that we approved PZR 18-001. All in favor?
What? I have a question.
Mr. Fraser has a question.
The drawing in our package and the drawing up there are different. It shows, in our package, it shows the rezoning coming down to a point, and up here it's blotted off. Which of the two is accurate?
I guess I don't quite understand. I don't...
The bottom end of the...
Yep, so this is the, that's the B3 portion, right there.
Pardon me?
That little pie-shaped portion of B3, that's what's being proposed for rezoning.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
But in our drawing, do you see on our drawing where...
Show it to him.
It comes down to a point.
Is that a mix-up or what?
It's the same picture.
Yeah, if I may through the chair, yeah, it's, it's an image. It's not necessarily accurate to, between the two drawings. Two drawings are not the same, however, it is .71 acres as shown in the plans that we have that were part of your drawings.
It was, it was moved and seconded, and so you're ready to vote? All in favor of the approval of PZR 18-001? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This item is approved, PZR 18-001. Okay, we're going to go to...
Mr. President, for this part, we need to introduce the ordinance.
Okay. All righty.
Ordinance number?
Can we give a ordinance number?
We are on, one second, I believe it's 1660, 1660, I believe.
1660?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Mr. Fraser?
I move that we introduce ordinance number 1660.
Support.
Okay, it was moved by Mr. Fraser and supported by Ms. Taylor that we approve, that we introduce ordinance number 1660. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance number 1660 is introduced. Now we will move on to PSLU 18-001, special use request.
Yes, thank you. So this is for the same property, 27,000 Telegraph Road. With the rezoning request, what the petitioner is now asking for under the special use portion would be to allow the use of the property for a used car, new car dealership and storage on that particular property itself. We believe in going through the process that it is in harmony with the appropriate development of the regional shopping district, that it's in accord with spirit and purpose of the chapter, and that it's of proper character to blend in with the existing developments in and around it.
Mr. Dorchen, you want to address this one also?
Again, this, I'm Sam Dorchen, Dorchen Martin Associates, 29895, Greenfield and Southfield. And again, this request is to make consistent all the uses that, that exist just to the north. The Glassman property is three or four different automotive brands. This one, this particular structure and property will be consistent with that. And in addition, just to the north of the Glassman property is another automotive brand, the Southfield Chrysler Jeep. And this will make, this special use will allow this to be used consistently with the remaining property.
This is a public hearing, and the public hearing is open?
Pamela Gerald, PO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. My telephone number is 248-346-0439. Once again, I am in total support of the special use request for Glassman, the Glassman Group, which is PSLU 18-0001. And just for clarification on the previous public hearing, you're going to go from RS to make the entire area B3.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Clarification, I needed that. So instead of having a B3 and an RS, it's now going to be RS.
Regional shopping?
Okay, thank you, because I definitely needed that clarification. Once again, Glassman, the Glassman Auto Group has been around for a lot of years. I really like the idea and the concept to introduce new car sales to another building and have car storage. I think it would be great to that area and maybe with the new development. And we do all of these neighborhood rakes, that maybe we can get some neighborhood rake and cleanup right in that area. Because from the Telegraph corridor, right to where Northwestern Highway connects, going around where Glassman is, where Toys R Us used to be in Soul Gardens, it's a lot of trash there. And it's also up the street from where Plant Moran is, which does your audits. So we really need some community rake and TLC in that area, but I think this request for special use should be approved, and I want to congratulate the Glassman Group for what they're doing with that area. Thank you, and I'm yielding a minute and two seconds.
Public hearing is still open. Do we have anyone else wishes to speak on this issue? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Counsel, discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
In the write-up, and when Mr. Glassman was here originally, he had said that he was trying to secure a new car dealership, and he was using this as sort of a temporary holding thing because he didn't want to put a lot of money into the building until he found out one way or the other. And in the write-up, it says that if a new dealership has not been approved for this location, or if the building has not been substantially improved architecturally within 18 months, this approval, of this approval, the petitioner is to return to the city council for a re-review of the special use request? Is that...
Yes.
Okay, and what would happen at that time?
If, after the 18 months?
Yes.
We would, well then, counsel would then re-review the special land use portion of this project, see whether or not you want to continue the special land use that you've granted. Again, the major concern is, the building as it stands right now, and wanting to see an improvement to that building through the planning commission and through staff, and also through the council meeting, there have been concerns with this existing, with this existing building and how it looks. And I think the concern is that it would look this way for a long period of time and never really get transformed into a better-looking building along Telegraph Road there. So the reason for coming back before the city council would be to, again, review the special land use to see if you wanted to continue to operate it as it is right now or if you'd seek significant changes to it.
Okay, if I recall, the drawings that he presented the last time, he did put a fair amount of money into it to bring it up to looking much better than it does right now.
Yes, through a paint job, yes.
Yeah, and signage and stuff.
Correct, yes.
Now, if it comes back in 18 months, and I hope he gets his new dealership and everything is...
As we do too.
Yes. Would it come, all the way, would it come through the planning commission again?
It would come to council, not through the planning commission.
Directly to council?
Just to council, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve PSLU 18-0001.
Or? It was moved by Ms. Mars and supported by Ms. Taylor that we approve special use request, PSLU 18-001. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Is approved. PSLU special, PSLU 18-001 special use request is approved.
We need an ordinance, Ms. Clark?
No.
Thank you.
Okay, we will now move into site plan.
If you'd like me to, then I can present the site plan on this particular project as well?
Okay, yeah, please.
Okay, all right. So the site plan portion is PSP 18-0002. Again, with the rezoning and now allowing for the special land use to use the, use the property for new and used vehicle sales, the petitioner has submitted to the planning department a site plan. It was evaluated to make sure that it met the requirements for bike racks, the typical things that we would ask for, pedestrian connections as well. It also, the site plan also shows locations for snow storage, which is also a requirement that we have on, on the site as well. So the property owner, again, is looking to upgrade the property. There were conversations that were had with regard to the existing pavement on the property itself and looking to upgrade that as well. And the petitioner had noted that they would look at doing repair as needed on that, on the, on the pavement to bring it up to snuff there.
Did you want to say anything, Mr. Dorchen, or would that, did the planner cover it sufficiently?
Well, a lot, a lot of the discussion that has preceded this has covered quite a bit of the information that's important. In addition to the, what is apparently considered minor improvements to the building, there will be quite a bit of money spent, not only for the purchase of the property and to make it consistent with the uses in the area, but also it, as was mentioned, Mr. Glassman, who's here tonight, has, has been searching for a new brand, which would obviously require changes to the building, substantial changes to the building. Mr. Glassman needs an area for used car sales. What we propose will make it usable, quite usable for that at this time. He owns other property in Southfield, Collision Shop, and possible relocation for used car sales is available down on Telegraph Road. And one of the, one of the things that was mentioned at the last meeting, I think at the beginning of the month, was the fact that from some, to some people's opinion, the building looked like a warehouse from, from the Telegraph Road and Expressway, the M5 Expressway. After leaving the meeting last few weeks ago, I drove on that expressway, M5, and took a look, and it is a very blank white wall that faces the expressway. And one of the things that struck me is the proliferation of wall murals in Detroit and other areas in this, this part of the state and in other cities, and large cities in the US. And I approached Mr. Glassman with the possibility that a wall mural would add quite a bit to the area, and on a temporary basis, not as, not necessarily as a permanent thing. And he agreed that it would be something he'd be very interested in. I also asked the planning department and the art commission people, and they were all interested in that. I've done a little looking into the possibilities, which seem to be endless. It depends on the imagination that somebody has. The only thing we're cautioned about is that we should run it past the, the city that, the sign inspector to make sure that it doesn't qualify as signage. We are working on that as a possibility. So with that, if I can answer any more questions, I'm here.
I'm very in favor of the mural idea, and you brought that to me some time ago. There was some discussion on whether Mr. Glassman would be interested in having the murals on panels so that they could be saved or just applied to the masonry wall?
I think it gets to be kind of a major situation to think of a wall that's 138 feet long and 24 feet high, to try to save it as an artwork that could be used somewhere else. Just, I would think, the cost of doing that compared to some of the estimates that I've received from artists is that it would be more cost-effective and perhaps more attuned to creativity of some people to consider this temporary and have, if you have another place for something that's 138 feet long and 24 feet high, that it could be repainted.
Well, it also could be multiple different murals on one wall, possibly, but no, I find this very encouraging and that the fact that he is willing to entertain this sure beats just the plain wall. And again, it would add something, especially with the new development going on around the corner that is picking up the area, so.
Okay, Mr. Dorchen, I know we did discuss the mural, and so the planner, I think he has the concept from that particular meeting, our intent. Okay, can I get a motion?
Mr. President, I move approval of PSP 18-0002.
Support.
Moved by Mr. Cruz, supported by Ms. Mars, that we approve site plan PSP 18-002. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. PSP 18-002 is approved.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I just want to congratulate Mr. Glassman, I see he's in the audience. And also, it happens to be that I purchased my first car from your dealership, so thank you.
Thank you all.
Is that a, a promise to get a discount next time? All right, we'll, 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 we'll get back on track here. Site plan number PSP 18-0001.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So the next item on your agenda is PSP 18-0001. This is the site planner view request of Paradise Lounge Restaurant at 25,000 Southfield Road. The property is on the, would be the northeast corner of 10 Mile Road and Southfield. If you recall, this particular location underwent a significant change in facade over the last couple of years to a more unified look across the front of Southfield Road. What the petitioner is looking to, to do is occupy the basement of this particular location with the Paradise Lounge. Paradise Lounge was in this location once before. I believe the petitioner noted for about 25 years it was in that location. So what he would like to do is reopen the Paradise Lounge in the basement of this location, 10,000 square foot nightclub restaurant. One of the reasons it's coming before council is because there's a waiver of parking required. 226 spaces are required, and there's 195 spaces on the site, so there would be a waiver from the zoning board of appeals that would be required to move this forward. In addition, one of the, the questions that came out of the, the council meeting had to do with fire suppression. The fire department was actually in this building a couple of years ago. The basement is actually the only area in the building that does have fire suppression in it. Within your packet is a, an email that I got from Mike Elbow, who was with fire prevention, and what he had noted was that the entire fire protection system, as well as the fire sprinklers and the kitchen hood suppression system, would need to be, go through a re-acceptance test, as well as a testing of the dialer. So that's what the fire department would require. And then another item that came from the council meeting was with regard to exterior parking lot lighting. And what staff has put in the conditions is that, should additional lighting be required, that the petitioner or owner would provide that lighting in the east portion of the parking lot.
I'm sorry, Jeff, can you repeat that last one about the lighting?
Sure. Yeah, with regard to the lighting, there was a concern about lack of lighting on the east side of the parking lot. So an evaluation of, of the lighting needs to be, needs to be made, and if additional lighting is required, it needs to be installed.
Good evening, members of council. My name is Moises Bermudas. I'm the attorney for the petitioner here, and he's standing to my left, and we're here to answer any questions you may have.
My name is Mike Yukumato. I live on 23960 Rockingham Street, Southfield, and I'm here to answer your questions and address your concerns.
Counsel, you have any questions? Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
Provided this is, if this is approved, what are you expecting in the way of entertainment? And what are your planned hours of operation?
We intend, for the state application that we get, we intend to open at noon and close at 2:00.
I'm asking about entertainment and hours of operation. When would you close at night, for instance?
2:00.
I couldn't hear, if you said...
Oh, okay. We will open at noon, 12:00 PM, and then we will close at 2:00 AM.
Okay.
And we have restaurants.
And entertainment, disc jockey, dancing?
We have entertainment. Majority of our business will be on food, about 80%, and we do have entertainment, especially on Sundays, where we have a gospel live band.
Okay.
Fraser?
Yes, I have a concern myself, and that is, I think it's...
I think it's our challenge here as council people to make sure that when we have businesses in the city of Southfield, that we cast a wide net and make sure that everyone is welcome. And I have a hard time figuring out how you're going to handicap people to the basement and get them back out again.
He's installed an elevator already.
I didn't see an elevator on the, the plans here.
It's, it's there.
Is there?
Up in the top right where you go at the back door, there.
If I may, through the chair, the elevator is directly adjacent to, there's a, oops, I'm sorry, is directly adjacent to a, there's a stairway that goes down off of the east side of the building. And the elevator is right adjacent to that stairway.
Just recently installed.
Just recently installed, okay.
Yes, in anticipation of, of this use.
Okay, then I changed my mind. Which I guess I can do that, too. So. Go ahead.
What is the capacity of the elevator from a handicap standpoint, wheelchair standpoint?
It's a single.
Single wheelchair?
Yes.
One other thing, with respect to light pollution. If lights are installed on the east side, will that, I understand there's some housing residential part over there. So will those lights be appropriately adjusted not to?
Sure.
There with the residents?
I, I think that's part of the proposal that the planner wants on the east side of the lot to address that lighting. So I think that would be one of the items that we would take care of.
Mr. Mandelbaum?
Yes, Jeff mentioned the fire suppression system has to, it's installed, but it has to be rechecked by our, the fire marshal or the fire team. And then entrances and exits into the, into the, because it's a basement facility, there's one entrance, if I can, if I understand this correctly, there's one entrance, that's like a wider staircase. But there's a total of four exits, stairwells that people can leave out in case of an emergency. But one entrance exit is open.
All of them are going to be open.
Well, I'm saying for an entrance, you only have that one entrance, but the.
Emergency exits, we will use.
The emergency exit, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Counsel, any additional questions, discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Focaccia.
I move PSP 18-0001, the site plan review request of the Paradise Lounge Restaurant.
Support.
It was moved by Mr. Focaccia and supported by Mr. Frasier that we approved PSP 18-0001. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Site plan PSP 18-0001 is approved.
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to add that the site plan committee, we were concerned what Mr. Frasier was concerned about. So there are two exits to the west, and then the big, wide stairway to the east, and then the elevator. So we were concerned about people getting down there and not being able to get out in case of emergency.
All right, we will move on to, that's it, you're all.
Thank you very much.
Okay, then thank you.
Good luck. And I'm glad you, I'm glad you have the elevator in there because you're my neighbor.
All right, we will now have communications. Mr. Gerard, Mr. Gerard Mullin. Yeah, he's here.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Gerard Mullin, Southfield Citizens Oversight Committee, Post Office Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48 Searl, 37. Last week, I talked about the three Southfield Civil Service Commissioners and how this city looked the other way by allowing these commissioners to serve on other boards and commissions in this city in violation of Section 6.5 of the city charter. This issue was oversimplified by me last week. It's really far more complicated because 6.5 is being selectively enforced by this city. In other words, a double standard. Let me expand on this. I will begin by reading all of the charter prohibitions that are placed on the Civil Service Commissioners. And I quote from Section 6.5, quote, "No member of the commission shall hold any other elective or appoint of office of the city, nor be employed by the city in any capacity, nor be an officer or a member of a committee of any partisan political club or organization, nor be a candidate for elective office," unquote. What I wish to draw from this quote is two things. First, a member of the Civil Service Commission can't serve on any other board nor commission, which I touched on last week. And secondly, nor can a commissioner be a candidate for any elective office. Both prohibitions are contained within the same sentence. This is important to note as I move forward. Last week in 27, last year in 2017, Coretta Hoag ran for Southfield City Council. And she was told by this city that she needed to step down from being a civil service commissioner per Section 6.5, and Coretta complied. But 10 years earlier, in 2007, no one asked Coretta to step down from the Civil Service Commission nor in the 10 intervening years when she was concurrently on the serves board in violation of Section 6.5. Again, please note, both prohibitions are listed within the same sentence in Section 6.5. But why one prohibition is enforced and not the other? Why?
Thank you. Ms. Pamela Gerald.
Thank you for pronouncing my name correct. Pamela Gerald, residents, I am honored and humbled to know that after all these years, I still have your trust, confidence, and support. One of my many Southfield angels told me that my blessings come from the north and not the south. I remember, no weapons formed against me shall prosper, and every tongue that rises up against me in judgment shall be condemned. Residents, go to YouTube and watch the March 5th Southfield COW meeting. Cue it to the counter timer, 1 hour, 37 minutes, and 31 seconds to listen to Dan Brightwell's commentary. Specifically at 1 hour, 38, 1 hour and 38 seconds on the counter timer. Dan Brightwell says he never wants to see 100 people come into this room uninvited and telling us what we can do for them. Dan Brightwell, you owe some of the Sapphire apartment residents, which are voters, an apology. And voters, Dan Brightwell is up for reelection in 2019. The Open Meetings Act of 1976 indicates that public hearings like this council meeting can be attended by any member of the public. Residents don't need an invitation from you, your colleagues, nor any other members of this administration. The ability to attend these meetings are a public right guaranteed by the state of Michigan. Dan, these council meetings have become a farcical sight to see, meeting after meeting. You have been on council for two years, and obviously, you have not been paying attention to how council meetings are conducted. I hope that you will benefit from those parliamentarian/Robert Rules of Order training meetings that have been scheduled for all of the members of council. Thank God for a qualified city clerk that will obviously be keeping this city on its toes. Dan, with your obsequious nature towards Mayor Ken Seiver, I am left with no choice but to say, I have no confidence in your ability to provide leadership or preside over this council during these meetings. So this year in November, you guys will vote for a new council president. Consider these combinations, Michael Mandelbaum and Lloyd Cruz, Lenny Taylor and Michael Mandelbaum, Lloyd Cruz and Lenny Taylor. Those would just be my recommendations. And for the record, anything that you do as it relates to Sapphire or apartment inspections in your efforts to be transparent, because all of you said that you wanted to be transparent, put those inspections on the city's website. So there are some Sapphire apartment people here. If you've got the courage and conviction for what you said, why don't you give them, give them an apology or explain what you meant. Time is up.
Thank you. We now have Ms. Brenda Smith.
Good evening. My name is Brenda Smith. I live at 16500 North Park Drive. I'm here this evening to ask your support for the newly-written Building Inspection Ordinance. 2016, 2017, and 2018 have been devastating years for many tenants living in rental apartment properties in the city of Southfield. These years without hot water, heat, elevators, busting pipes, and floods culminated in a mandatory evaluation of tenants on January 5th, 2018. Because several tenants have addressed this situation to city council on several occasions, each of you is very familiar with our troubles. Several years ago, a similar building inspection ordinance was put before your honorable body for approval. Unfortunately, that ordinance was not approved. We do not want this ordinance before you today to fail, however. Apartment living has declined significantly in many apartment buildings and complexes here. Many tenants are living in shameful, unsafe, and uninhabitable apartments, even as they pay rents that exceed market rate value. This past weekend, our young people took to the streets to save their lives from gun violence, essentially because our Congress refuses to write and enact legislation that will protect them. Here, too, in the city of Southfield, there has been an outpouring from tenants, their families, and various TV outlets demanding that tenants' problems be addressed. At this point, only your honorable body, excuse me, your honorable body can pass the kind of legislation that can fix or at the very least reduce the problem. There is no other government body that can write legislation that empowers building safety and engineering expanded entry to apartments in Southfield and the ability to issue violations and fines where necessary.
Ms. Smith, thank you.
Okay, I'm just here to implore you to approve the ordinance.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Communications, it's closed. Those are the individuals who have requested recognition. Let me just speak briefly here. With respect to Robert's Rules of Order, I requested those, that session, and I asked our clerk to arrange for that session. So this is a needed item, so there's nothing that's. And with respect to the comment Ms. Gerald made when I mentioned, I did misspeak that night. I indicated what I should have said or intended to say was, I didn't want individuals coming here with, by, unexpected. We didn't have no, we did not know what this was all about. Hundreds of people just came into the room, and everybody was trying to figure what was this about. So with respect to ordinances that are being passed, in any, as a council, we want to be aware of what's coming down the pipe so we can respond accordingly that particular day. But obviously, it's, all of us here, and our attorney sits here, we are familiar with the Open Meeting Act. And that's why we are, we are, we are, we follow open meetings law to the letter. And with respect to that, any other council people, Ms. Taylor?
Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight. I was at the Sapphire on Friday with the inspections in. We do hear you. The city of Southfield is working very diligently. Our inspectors were out. They come out on a regular basis. And thank you for welcoming us into your units. You did allow us in. We did work with your complaints, and we are, we made our list, and we are working on those. And I was given a letter tonight that I know that each of the residents received from management that you will now have your unit inspected. And they said that they're doing that on Thursday and Friday of this week. So from us being diligent in what we're doing, they're also taking on more responsibilities as your management. So we will stay involved, continue to let us know how things are going. And again, thank you very much for coming tonight and speaking out, but also for allowing us into your units because that helped us a lot. So I wanted to say thank you for that. I also want to mention that on Sunday, if you would mark your calendar, Sunday, April 29th, that the Social Justice Ministry of Empowerment Church will have a voter education forum. It's free to the public. It will be at 1:00 at the Shriners Silver Garden. It's just for voter education. That's what it's all about. So the name of it is to know before you go. It's going to talk to you about everything that's going to be on the ballot. And lastly, I'd like to say that as we're closing out the month of March, March is National Women's History Month. In 1987, the U.S. Congress designated March as the National Women's History Month. This created a special opportunity in our schools, our workplace, our communities to recognize the ongoing persistence of our mothers, our grandmothers, our aunts, sisters, neighbors, and friends. And we should celebrate their achievements of all women this month and throughout the year. I cannot name all the women pioneers that the city of Southfield has. But I do ask that as you walk the halls of city, of the city hall out there, that you take a look at those pictures and remember, remember all the women that paved the way for us today. People such as Barbara Tally, who was the first African-American councilwoman, our current, our past mayor and current councilwoman, Brenda Lawrence, our current city clerk, Sharika Hawkins, Tanya Morris, our councilwoman. We have commissioners Nancy Quarles and Janet Jacksons, just to name a few. Women are a very important part of our history here in Southfield. So as we celebrate our 60th anniversary of the city next month on the 28th, I hope we recognize and celebrate some of the women who have helped Southfield to be the great city that it is today. And in parting, I'd like to say, women strong. Thank you.
Mr. Mandelbaum?
Yes, I wanted to remind everyone that on Friday, April 6th, from 2:00 to 6:00 at the Southfield Library, there will be two clinics that kind of go together. But one is a free expungement clinic, and the other is a free entrepreneur legal workshop. Again, Friday, April 6th, from 2:00 to 6:00 P.M. at the Southfield Library. And you can contact our Human Services Department if you have any questions. Also, starting next week, the first Monday in April, we will have our LEAF pickup, starting again in yard waste. Just make sure that you comply with the city codes that are guidelines of how to dispose of those properly so they get picked up and they don't get missed. Thank you very much.
Mr. Frasier?
Yes, this evening I have two, two items I'd like to speak to. The first one is, this past week, I attended the Michigan Municipal League Legislative Conference. Conference in Lansing, and I felt that this is one of the better ones that, that Michigan Municipal League has put on. I attended several of the breakout sessions, and one of them spoke about OPEB and how other communities have been trying to meet their, their requirements for funding for OPEB, so I will share that with, with you, Mr. Administrator. There are several other ones, you can only, with one body, you can only be in one place at one time. They had one that was on, that was very well-attended. I talked to several people that were there, and that was children in prison and, or youth in prison. And apparently, they had some speakers that they had experienced that there were, the description was that there were, some of the audience were sitting there with their mouth open, they couldn't believe it, others were very emotional about what the young people talked about, what they had to go through being in prison, so. But there are several other breakout sessions that were, that were very good. The other thing that I'd like to bring to people's attention is that on the 4th of April, between 2:00 and 3:00 o'clock in the afternoon, there will be a bell-ringing event on the, the front steps of the, the city hall to commemorate the 50th anniversary of Martin Luther King Jr.'s assassination. He was assassinated on April 4th, 1968, and our, the bell is in a lobby will be moved out on the, the front steps. So I'm asking everyone that's listening and watching and come and join in and, and help commemorate the event that unfortunately is still going on, that we haven't found a solution yet. But it looks like my generation and the millennial generation has kicked the can down the road, and it looks like the young people have picked up the can and said it's no longer going to be kicked down the road, we're going to do something about it. So my hat's off to them, and I support it all the way. Thank you.
Mr. Focassi.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I just would like to mention, young people who have made Southfield look real good in the way of athletics. We had the Southfield ladies at Southfield A&amp;T. They beat Farmington Hills Mercy Class A in the basketball, and they won the state, I'm sorry, the district championship. We had the young ladies here before council the other day, and they have won, they stayed title in track, and have brought recognition to the city. And Saturday, we had the young men from SES. They fought up there at President Center, and they become state champions as well. So we have three groups that have really brought recognition to our, to our city and all over the state of Michigan, so we're proud of each and every one of them.
Not seeing anyone else. We will now move to the mayor's portion.
On Saturday, I attended, along with a number of other Southfield people, the March for Our Lives demonstration along the Detroit River. I think most people know that I am very much favor gun control, and as a former educator, I'm just, find it abhorrent, the idea of arming teachers in schools, and that seemed to be the, the same feeling of the people who attended the event on Saturday. I also wanted to give a report to the public and council tonight briefly. We continue on our mission of enhancing the city with public art. We have collected thousands of dollars to, for the Northland Art Fund. We have paid back the $500,000 loan that we took out to purchase that art. So we now have the second piece, we have Boy and the Bear in the Library, and we have the Searl Etrog untitled piece. We're still searching to see if there was a title for that, but that has been placed in the South Garden in the front of City Hall. It looks great in, in that location. On this Friday, the Crowd by Gio Pomodoro, the, it's an eight-foot-long, six-foot-high brass relief. That piece has been rented by the Town Center and will be placed this Friday in the, in the 2000 Tower Lobby of Town Center. And we also have the bids back for the restoration of the Peacock that graced the Peacock Court at Northland for many, many years, that we will be restoring that piece, and it'll come back to council for confirmation on its, on its location. We took multiple bids for the restoration, and of course, that restoration is along, along with the restoration of the Crowd and the Searl Etrog piece are all being paid for by donated funds. No city tax dollars are expended on, on these restorations and installations. So I just wanted to give a brief update on where we're, we're moving along. It's rather time-consuming, but we're making a slow but steady progress.
That's it? Okay. Administration?
I have no, no items this evening, sir.
Madam Attorney?
Yes, good evening, Mr. President, City Council. My name is Dawn King. I'm Assistant City Attorney from Southfield City Attorney's Office here while Sue Ward is away. On March 5th, at the Committee of the Holds, my understanding, there was a discussion for the proposed amendment to Chapter 105 of the City Code, which would require annual inspection of all multiple-family residential dwellings within the city, including all common areas, as well as inspections of not less than 20% of all dwelling units as randomly selected by the Building Department situated within a multiple-family residential dwelling. There was a consensus of City Council at the March 5th, 2018 Committee of the Hold meeting to proceed with the introduction and enactment of this ordinance. Accordingly, City Attorney recommends that you council approve the resolution set forth below, which is the proposed ordinance amending, excuse me, amendment deleting existing Chapter 105, registration of apartment communities, and adding in lieu thereof a new Chapter 105, registration and inspection of multiple-family residential dwellings. Thank you.
Okay. Counsel.
Mr. President.
Mr. Frazier.
I move that we approve and introduce the ordinance, of the proposed ordinance amendment to the multiple-family inspections. Support.
Moved by Mr. Frazier, supported by Mr. Cruz, that we approve and introduce proposed ordinance amendment, multi-family inspections.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a comment.
Go ahead.
I am for this, this ordinance, and I want to make it very clear that I am. My concern is that today, we have the power to, to put our Building Department inspection in that, in the places where they're needed to make sure that the people are safe and that they are kept healthy, and they don't have a serious problems in the units. I think that, that they become very, very time-consuming. For example, the Sapphire facilities, I understand, today, we had 23 trips to the, to Sapphire Apartments, and really talking about hiring, you know, three individuals to go through probably 14,000 buildings, units, I'm sorry. So I'm very concerned whether or not we're ready to put together a team that can really do justice to everybody who has a need and are living in these apartment complexes. The big thing that I am concerned about is I have a letter, and I'm sure council had received it, it's a form letter, but it's telling what an owner surcharged everybody all of a sudden for heat and water and electricity and TV, whatever it is, and I'm concerned about those people who can ill afford to pay for those extras now that are in these apartments. And I'm very concerned what's going to happen to those that can ill afford to pay these, these costs that are because these, these owners really are taking advantage of the situation. And I, so I want the city to, to get the control of it. I want them to have a team put together. I want them to have a plan. I want an organized plan, and I want to go in and take care of the most needy first and make sure that all the 14,000 units in the city are taken care of. And so I just wanted to make that clear because I really am concerned about not only the, the problems that the people are having, but also what the surcharges are going to be placed upon them if we don't be careful. So that ends my comments, Mr. Chairman.
It was moved by Mr. Frazier, supported by Mr. Cruz, that we approve the resolution, proposed ordinance amendment for multi-family inspections. Are you vote, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Is approved, the ordinance.
1661, it should be.
16, okay, ordinance number 1661 is being entered.
I move that we introduce ordinance number 1661.
Support. Moved by Mr. Frazier, supported by Ms. Taylor, that we approve, introduce ordinance number 1661. All in favor?
Aye.
As have it. We will move on to the next item, ordinances.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to move that we enact ordinance number 1657.
Support.
Been moved by Mrs. Mandelbaum, supported by Mr. Frazier, that we approve, we enact ordinance number 1657. All in favor?
Aye.
As have it.
I'd like to move that we enact ordinance number 1658.
Support.
It was moved by Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by Mr. Frazier, that we approve, we enact ordinance number 1658. All in favor?
Aye.
As have it.
I'd like to move that we enact ordinance number 1659.
Support.
Moved by Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by Mr. Frazier, that we enact ordinance number 1659. All in favor?
Aye.
As have it. We also have other ordinances, 1660. Do we want to enact that tonight? Pardon?
We'd have to do that under an emergency.
Okay, all right. What about this one that we just approved, 1661? Do we approve that tonight?
No. No.
Okay, all right.
It has to cook.
Okay, all right. We're just trying to be efficient. Dare not be any, any other items on the agenda. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.